Morning.
Jen, would you mind promoting Ryan as well?
Yep.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
No problem. Eric, did you get that email?
I did, and it's opened up, and I'll try not to mess it up too much.
Perfect.
All right, so just tell me when to go.
We're good to go whenever you're ready.
Okay, so let me call to order the meeting of the San Ramon Planning Commission's ad hoc committee on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Before the meeting starts, Ms. Nylander would like to make some remarks regarding the Brown Act and the impact of COVID-19 thereon.
Thank you. Assembly Bill 361 suspends certain provisions of the Brown Act, allowing public meetings like this one to be held by teleconference to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. I will now conduct roll call, after which I will ask Commissioner Wallace to recognize me in order to confirm certain matters for the record. So today we have Commissioner Marks. Thank you, Commissioner Wallace.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, I recognize Ms. Nylander. Oh, you need to do Part Two of the Brown Act of COVID-19. Please proceed.
Thank you. Based on the responses to roll call, the record should reflect that all committee members can hear the proceedings clearly. If there are no objections, the record will further reflect that each committee member believes, based on voice or facial recognition or otherwise, that the persons representing themselves to be commission members are, in fact, commission members. Seeing no objection, I will turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Wallace with a reminder that all votes must be taken by roll call.
Thank you, Ms. Nylander.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda this morning is public comment. Ms. Nylander, before we open up public comment, could you explain to our audience what the rules are regarding public comment at this time?
Yes, no problem. So, public comment at special meetings is limited to the item described in the notice, and therefore only public comment related to the agenda items will be heard today. Those who wish to address the Ad Hoc Planning Commission may press the Raise Your Hand button on your computer screen or star nine on your telephone when public comment is being taken.
Okay, before we start, I mean, before I open up public comment, I believe that at this point, public comment is on non-agenda items?
So it's actually limited to the items on the agenda for ad hoc meetings.
Okay.
So, once we open item three, then we'll have, we could open up public comment for audience members if they'd like to talk.
Okay, just so we're clear, the public comment at this time is on non-agenda items. We will have public comment during item number 3.1. Correct?
I don't know how it works with ad hoc, if we allow it for outside items. I think this is just kind of a synopsis on how the public comment will work. As far as I understand, during ad hoc meetings and special meetings, it's just limited to the items on the agenda.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
So, let's open up. Let's wait, we're gonna need to have public comment after we speak.
Yes.
Because that would make more sense, okay? So we'll pass on item two, public comment, and we will have public comment during item number three, which is the housing element, adoption schedule, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
So let's move on to the main attraction, which is item 3.1, and I believe the floor will belong to Ms. Yi.
Well, thank you. Good morning. I almost had to catch myself there. We don't typically see this group during the daytime hours, but thank you both for your service on the ad hoc committee for the general plan. I'm just going to provide a brief verbal staff report, and then I do have all of the tables that are in your staff report available as slides, if we want to bring those up as part of our conversation today. But the first part of the report, I just wanted to provide a quick summary of our housing element's schedule. As we've identified in the staff report, our statutory due date for completion of the housing element six cycle is expected to be adopted by January 2023. And in order to meet that statutory deadline, the city has to prepare a number of different drafts of the housing element for public review and housing and community development state review. If you work backwards from that January 2023 deadline, essentially what that means is that the City of San Ramon will need to have our first public review draft available this spring in order to provide the minimum number of days for the public to provide comments and for the city to address and incorporate those comments ahead of formal submittal to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their review. In the past, the city was able to submit a review draft to HCD without the formal public review portion, and so, and also, there was no mandatory 90-day review period that HCD had to respond back. And so we're working with deadlines now that are mandated by new state housing laws that really greatly impact the ability for us to to shorten our normal review time, which is usually ahead of the adoption date after we go through our local Measure G obligations. So because of this compressed timeline, we've, we're going to be utilizing this ad hoc committee as an opportunity for us to have some conversations and gain feedback on the direction that our draft is headed ahead of that spring deadline to release the public review draft. And so our expectations that we'll be using this committee on a monthly basis to try to work through some of our policy directions and our sites inventory analysis. The second part of the staff report is on the housing element site inventory, and I'll refer to our current cycle that we're in now as the fifth cycle, and then our future adoption that will begin 2023 through 2031 as the sixth cycle. So currently, the City of San Ramon is in our fifth cycle housing element, and we're working towards an adoption of our sixth cycle. As I mentioned, that has to be done before January 2023. One of the key elements of the housing element is providing an outline of the city's housing plan for how we will meet our regional housing needs obligation. For the City of San Ramon, our regional housing needs allocation is approximately, or not approximately, is 5,111 units. So between 2023 through 2031, we will need to provide enough housing sites within our housing element documenting that we have the adequate land uses in place to accommodate at least those 5,111 units. And so what, the first step of that process is really to identify in our fifth cycle, all of the existing sites that currently exist in our fifth cycle, and what has and hasn't been approved or constructed. The approved sites that have already been constructed essentially get taken out of our our future housing element because they've already been constructed on. And then we look at the remaining sites from our fifth cycle and have to essentially narrow down whether or not those sites continue to be good housing opportunity sites. If we want to keep those sites as opportunity sites or want to take some of the existing sites out, and that will determine how many sites remain in our fifth cycle. That number is identified in Table 1 of the staff report. We show a capacity remaining in our fifth cycle, about 20, almost 2,200 units. We then look at the current pipeline projects that have already been approved in the city but have yet to be constructed, and we look at units that expect to be constructed and issued permits as of July 1st, 2022. We can begin counting the units that have building permits issued from July 1st, 2022 through 2022, through 2031 as units counting towards our sixth cycle arena. And so Table 2 documents what our current pipeline projects that we have units allocated towards. We're showing that that's about 2,300 units that we've currently approved that have, are in, expected to be constructed within the near future, beginning July of this year. With those two numbers of remaining capacity in our fifth cycle and our pipeline projects for the sixth cycle, that brings us to a summary of how many additional units we will need to get to the 5,111 units that the state has assigned to us. Based on staff's current analysis of the unit count between existing capacity and pipeline projects, there's still a need to find housing opportunity sites above and beyond what we currently have in our fifth cycle and identify additional sites to accommodate at least 991 housing units. Because there's a need to have a buffer of units in our housing element, we don't want to plan for 991 and then come to approving projects where maybe that number gets less than what our expected capacity is, and then get into a situation where we need to come up with additional sites during the mid-year of our cycle and come up with additional sites. And that's considered, our terminology for that is not having a net loss in our housing element. So we want to provide an adequate buffer of additional housing units. Staff is estimating that we'll need to try to find more sites to accommodate approximately 2,000 units in order to have an adequate buffer to address our additional demand for housing units plus what we expect may get us to a point where there's no net loss. And so the conversation today really is centered around our preliminary list of housing opportunity sites. That's Table 4 in the staff report. Staff has put together a list of 19 sites that we'd like to at least start our conversation on where those 2,000 units could potentially be accommodated. We've looked at different sites throughout the city and the various status of vacant versus non-vacant, what the existing land use is on that site, what past interest has been expressed by property owners or developers who may have considered developments on these sites. And we've compiled this list of 19 sites, a majority of which are new opportunity sites that currently do not exist in our housing element. And some of them are existing sites, but currently in our housing element may have a lower expected capacity on those sites. So specifically, on this list, the Toyota site number 15 in Bishop Ranch, that's considered underdeveloped and may have more capacity than what had originally been envisioned in our fifth cycle. Same thing with sites 18 and 19 in the Doorby Valley. There may be some additional opportunities there where previously there was a lower density that was expected to be developed on those sites. There may be some additional opportunity to increase the capacities that are currently envisioned in the fifth cycle. So the discussion today, if we could really focus on those site inventory lists, that's the feedback that we'd like to at least make sure that we get from this committee today. But if there are concerns about what land, what sites we carry over from fifth cycle to sixth cycle, we'd also like to get that feedback as well. And then we'll provide that, those, that information to our consultants who are working on creating, helping us create this list, and then come back and report at a future ad hoc meeting with where we stand with the feedback that we have received. So I'll leave you with that. I know that was a lot of information, and I can pull up these tables if you'd like to speak or comment about these specifically.
Mr. Chairman, a question?
Sure.
Cindy, I just want to go back to the part of your presentation where you talked about the 991-unit shortfall and the need for a 2,000-unit buffer. Are you suggesting that we need 2,000 units plus 991, or is that included in the 2,000 units?
Yes, good question. The 2,000 units includes the 991. And just a note about that buffer. As we all know, our inclusionary housing ordinance has a minimum requirement of 15% of a total housing project typically has to set aside a 15% allocation for low and very low-income households. And so not every project, residential development project comes to us as 100% affordable. And so what we have to expect is that with any project, we may have to approve or consider more market rate units in order to be able to provide those lower-income units. And that's what's driving that need for that 20% buffer minimum is to try to plan for the expectation that we'll need to have market rate units that balance our ability to get or to provide those lower-income units.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Yi, you're finished with your formal presentation?
I am.
Okay. What I'd like to do is to praise as follows. I'd like Commissioner Marks's views on this. First, I would like for the two commissioners, starting with Commissioner Marks, to ask any questions he has of staff regarding the report. That would include any questions on Tables 1 through 4. Once the questions are done, then I propose to open up public comment. And once public comment is finished, then I would suggest the commissioners could make any comments they want in preparation for our next meeting. Commissioner Marks, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, well, that means you're up on questions.
Okay. I would first like to ask some questions about properties that are not included in Table 1 or in Table 4. My first question would be, along Old Crow Canyon Road, are the following buildings and sites included? Or, you know, anywhere else, or why are they not included? And let me start with, first of all, the Center Point Building, which is a very large property. 2,600 Old Crow Canyon Road, which is an existing two-story building, and admittedly on a shallow site. The Agape Presbyterian Church, which is pretty close to the corner of Deerwood and Old Crow, and the Gilead Bible Church Montessori School. They look like at least three of them are opportune sites. And I should preface this a little bit. My overriding goal here is not to quibble with sites that the staff may think are appropriate. I have some views, but by and large, I'm not inclined to do that. What I am absolutely inclined to try and do is keep new housing, especially higher-density housing, away from existing neighborhoods. And to the extent that that can be accomplished, that to me is very important. So again, I will be looking at that throughout the whole process, and I wonder about the Center Point Building, Agape Presbyterian Church, and Gilead Bible Church site.
Yeah, so the, so the housing, the housing opportunity sites map, it's page 10 of the attachment. Where we currently, so there's currently on the housing opportunity sites map, there's sites 1, 2, and 3, which are in what's now referred to the San Ramon Village specific plan. The San Ramon Village specific plan has identified where housing is, where new housing land uses are going to be. So we just had that effort this last year. The opportunity sites were limited to any land uses that were identified in the San Ramon Village specific plan as future residential. And so we're using that as the basis for a future housing opportunity sites in the sixth cycle is whatever was identified as a housing had a residential land use in the San Ramon Village specific plan will now move forward as a housing opportunity site for the sixth cycle. Center Point was not identified as a housing opportunity site in the San Ramon Village specific plan or having a residential land use. I want to just double-check that. But Housing Opportunity 2 does have where the Gilead Bible Church. I think you had Center Point, Old Crow Canyon Road, and Gilead. So Gilead is in Housing Opportunity Site 2. Center Point did not have direction to be a residential land use as part of the San Ramon Village specific plan. I'll have to confirm that, but I don't believe that that was added. But let me, let me pull those maps up and-
I don't, I don't need an answer directly right now. Look, I'm sorry, Lauren, I did not mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, the Center Point Building is designated as business mixed-use, and so it's not a residential site per the plan as it exists today.
Right. What I'm driving at is, we weren't under the same obligations when we looked at what we allowed to be housing sites when we were doing the, what is now the Village specific plan. But now that we are chasing RENA sites and numbers, it seems to me that we have to look at everything, even those things that even a year ago or so, we did not think would be housing sites. And I would like there to be consideration of the Center Point Building, the Agape Presbyterian Church, and the Gilead Bible site. Well, Gilead's already there, so Agape and Center Point, and possibly 2,600. And again, I think Cindy's answer is spot-on relative to what we did when we were looking at the specific plan. But again, for us, the world has changed. We've got to find a whole lot more sites. So my next group of buildings that I'm going to ask, and again, Cindy, I'm not looking for you to give me an answer right now. But at the intersection of Ryan Industrial Court and Old Crow Canyon Road, there are, excuse me, the following buildings and sites that potentially could be housing sites, and they are the Dance Studio, the San Ramon Valley Bible Church. There is a two-story office building, which I didn't find an identification name on it, and the Roadrunner Printing Building. We already have housing, as you well know, at the very top of the road where we have a condominium or townhouse project. It seems to me that, again, those might be opportune sites. Another site that I'd like us to take a look at that is not included in Table 4 is, what is the San Ramon Valley Conference Center, located, as you know, between the Iron Horse Trail and Camino Ramon, which is a very large site, not just where the buildings are, but the parking lot. And again, it's consistent with the notion of putting housing in the Bishop Ranch area at the higher densities, if we have to go with higher densities. And then along Norris Canyon Road, at the intersection of Camino Ramon and Norris Canyon, is the Norris Technology Center, which is a series of two-story buildings that, again, within the Bishop Ranch, and in this case, directly across the street, directly across Norris Canyon, from where Summer Hill will be constructing their project. And so that is one large cluster of sites that seem to me to be opportune. I don't know if they have physical constraints. I don't know what other issues might be attached to them, but they are the result of several days of driving around the city trying to take a look at sites. Again, consistent with what I am trying to accomplish, or at least hope we all accomplish, and that is keep the housing away from existing neighborhoods to the extent that we possibly can. I also, on all of these sites, and some of, and the sites on Table 1 and 6 at some point, I'd like to see worksheets that come back to the committee that take a look at those properties at higher densities, at 20 acres or 20 units to the acre, at 25 units to the acre, at 30 units to the acre. Again, for the reason that, yes, we might have to bump up the density on certain sites, but we will not need as much land, hopefully, if, as if we had kept it at lower densities. And so again, I think we're at a good starting point with what the staff has done, but these were my concerns as I drove around the city, questions that I thought about. I also want to make a comment about Table 1. There are some sites there that, at least right now, give me a lot of pause, and they are Sites 11 and, I'm sorry, Sites 12 and 13, the Marketplace in the Country Club Village. I know that, at least as I recall, Country Club Village was a mixed-use zoned property. But here we have at 14 units to the acre, 150 units. And I don't know if that's the entire 10.7. Another, and the second overriding concern that I have with what we are doing in the housing element, and I will have that concern when we get into the land use element, is we need to use this opportunity to protect and preserve the retail base of the city and not take a shopping center and essentially make the dominant land use housing. When we zone the shopping centers to be mixed-use, those that we did- shopping centers to be mixed use, those that we did, yes, we accepted that we, there was going to be some housing, but, um, and, and consistent with Section D four thirty-eight of the zoning ordinance, non-retail uses, we limited non-retail uses to twenty-five percent. And I would say that's twenty-five percent of, of the, uh, gross square footage. I don't want us to rely on the shopping centers to provide more than that. Um, and so I think we are going to need some policy changes, but again, responding just to what I think Cindy asked. I have a concern about those two, um, land uses. And I also, on Table Four, have a concern about Site Three, two oh eight one five San Ramon Valley Boulevard, um, which is a part of the West Side Specific Plan, being developed as housing at all. I, I think that it may not be necessary, given other sites that could be included as housing opportunity sites. And quite honestly, I think it conflicts with our overall goal of protecting open space um, in the West Side Hills. Um, and so I would like to see that removed from, uh, the preliminary list of Housing Opportunity Sites. I, I, I wonder if you could answer a question about the assumption of sixty-four ADUs, how that was arrived at and, um, what, what were you looking at when you did that?
Sure, um, I, I have a couple of, of responses. Um, I'll, I'll take the ADU question first. And the, the assumed sixty-four eighty use that we've identified in Table Three um, as, as thirty-two moderate and thirty-two above moderate income units, um, counting towards our next cycle. Um, that was the recommendation from our housing consultant, um, based on their work in other, um, regions of California and working with HCD. Um, HCD's, um, allowing cities to count ADU production towards meeting your Rena. But, um, that, um, those numbers have to be based on past production of ADUs in a city. So historical, um, data on ADU construction in your city um, to justify how many units you can count towards meeting your Rena. Um, they've also provided some guidance for what level of affordability you could use those ADUs. Um, and, um, so our, our, our pitch to HCD as part of the first public review draft is going to be that, um, based on historical data from the city, we're expecting about sixty-four units of ADUs to be constructed over the, the eight-year cycle. Um, and hoping that HCD, um, agrees that that's a, uh, appropriate number to count towards Arena.
Um, let me then, th- thank you, Cindy. Let me refer you to Table One again. Uh, Site Eighteen, and this is a simple question. Is that, did you mean the Chang Residential?
It is the Chang Residential Property. At, at one point in time during the fifth cycle, it was owned by the Chu family, but Chu and Chang are essentially the same property owners.
Being the pet rat, being the pet rat that I am, I, I went through mountains of old reports looking for the Chu property and came up with Chang every time. So, okay, now that makes sense to me then, and I, I appreciate that answer. Though, those are really my, my questions at the moment. I have a number of comments. After we have had the public comment and whatever other staff information. And, and I also am hopeful that there will be an opportunity this morning for, uh, Eric and I to offer some general comments and concerns that are not specific to these tables, but that are about, um, the work that the, uh, staff and the consultants and hopefully the ad hoc committee are going to do. So I thank you at this time and I will, um, stop right here.
Thank you, Commissioner Marks. Um, I'm gonna approach it a little bit differently than Commissioner Marks did, because I had some specific questions regarding, A, the properties and B, the numbers that are on the charts. Let me start with the latter first. Um, as I understand it, our Rena numbers are five thousand one hundred and eleven units. Did I get that number correct?
That's right.
All right. So when you add up the potential sites on the leftovers from the fifth cycle and the pipeline projects, you come up with four thousand five hundred and twenty-one units that are either from leftover from the fifth cycle or are in the pipeline as planned and approved projects. That number comes out to four thousand five hundred and twenty-one units, which is five hundred and ninety short of our Rena number of five thousand one hundred and eleven. So my question is, where did the nine hundred and ninety-one units come from?
Yeah, um, great question. So, and it might be helpful for me to share my screen because I, I have these tables available. So I, I, if I may, um, it may make it easier for us to, to talk about these. So, um, as you mentioned, planned and approved units in Table Three are more or less referred to as our pipeline projects. This two thousand three hundred and thirty-one number, that's the same number as, um, what you show on, um, the, the previous table, Table Two. So that's the, this total two thousand three hundred and thirty-one is what's considered our planned and approved units. We can count those units and what, um, the, those approved projects are identifying as, in, uh, units based on, um, affordability to get to the two thousand three hundred and thirty-one. And then, as I explained, we are able to count sixty-four ADUs towards our expected Rena credit. Um, and then the remaining Rena, then after you've applied the pipeline and the sixty-four, um, ADUs is in this bold remaining Rena after credits, uh, row. Fourth and fifth cycle units is twenty-one ninety. That's the remaining capacity that's shown on Table One. Um, and the expectation of affordability, that is expected from that remaining capacity is identified in each of these columns. What then we are left with is our remaining, um, unit surplus. It's true, when you add the fourth and fifth cycle and the, and the pipeline projects together, that does get you to over, you know, forty-five hundred units. But what we're really looking at is this unit surplus or need in the yellow, uh, row. And when you add up these numbers, this is what our deficit for Rena by income category is. And so while we're ahead on above moderate, where we're really behind is the very low and the low income units. And that's actually the basic minimum that we have to identify as additional sites for HCD, um, to show that we have enough sites for our, our, uh, sixth cycle. These numbers here is what adds up to the nine hundred and ninety-one.
Okay, so let's, let's stay on that for a second. With respect to the pipeline units shown on Table Two, I understand how you got to the allocation numbers that appear on the first, uh, line entry. But for the fourth and fifth cycle units, first of all, there's no breakdown uh, on Table One showing potential affordable units in any category, let alone extremely low, low and the like as there was under Table Two. Now, when you multiply the twenty-one ninety, um, potential units and base it on our affordable housing ordinance, which requires a fifteen percent must-build of units, if you apply that fifteen percent must-build to the twenty-one ninety units, you get a total of only three hundred and twenty-nine affordable units. So my question is, given that, where can I find the breakdown on Table Three of the very low, low income, modern and above moderate income for the leftover units?
So that's information that i- is in the background data that staff is analyzing. Um, we have previously, um, using, um, past, um, performance, been able to demonstrate to HCD that although our must-build obligation is fifteen percent for projects, um, we are still collecting fees and there are some projects that are building at higher than fifteen percent. Um, Dordi Valley was one example of project that did come in with more than, than the minimum, um, fifteen percent must-build. And so there are, um, um, allowances that the city has to increase the expected low and very low income, um, units on existing, existing housing opportunity sites. Um, and, and some of these numbers may potentially be more aggressive, just given that some of the recent projects have been more single-family dwelling units than multifamily. But between density bonus, um, assumptions for some of these housing opportunity sites from past, um, production on some of, um, on some of our projects, we are able to make the case to the state that some of these sites will be developed at a higher than fifteen percent, affordability.
Okay, well, let me just point out, I, I haven't seen any of those numbers. I haven't seen any assumptions that underlie the numbers, so I'm not in a position to ask detailed questions about those. But let me just point out this. If you add the affordable units that appear as the fourth and fifth cycle units on Table Three, you come up with a one thousand four hundred and forty-five affordable units. That's basically seventy-five percent of all the units that you've allocated to the leftovers from Cycle Five. Um, I would be very interested to see how that number gets justified, uh, because it seems to me that, let's put it this way, there's some questions about the assumption, uh, that I see for that. But I'm looking forward to receiving the backup data that justifies that. Can you switch over to the fifth cycle, uh, Table One, please? I had some questions about the leftover housing. Okay, I, I have some questions. First of all, the, the bird, uh, the site number one, that's really referring to the property that is north of Purdue going to the Danville border, that would include the Golden State property?
Yes, so what's referred to as the residential overlay of the Ceremony Village specific plan. That's what constitutes Housing Opportunity Site One.
Okay, and the, the difference between potential units or remaining capacity actually reflects the approval of the Golden State property. That's why it appears in the pipeline and not under Table One.
Right, so this one hundred and eight units is, um, does not include the Golden State.
Okay, Item Two, Deerwood Omega, that basically is if you go up Deerwood and then go north, that's the area that you're talking about?
Um, it's, uh, intersection of Deerwood Road and, um, uh, Old Crook Canyon Road and San Ramon Valley Boulevard. So that would encompass the Rome Property, Gilead Bible Church, um, the, um, a- all the way up to, um, uh, Morgan's Masonry and, 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 um, to, what used to be Purdue Road, so Free Preserve Parkway. That's Housing Opportunity Site Number Two.
Okay, so, um, Old Crow Canyon changes into Omega at, uh, Deerwood?
At Deerwood, north, northern.
All right, so Site Number Two would be all the area, uh, north of Deerwood to the, uh, Danville Line, except for the Purdue Omega Housing Overlay, it's basically the housing overlay, including like Morgan's Masonry.
Right, that, what, what we refer to in the Village Specific Plan as, as the Village Center.
Right, and, and to some extent, that would also be Item Number Three, Deerwood Old Crow Canyon. If you're going up Deerwood, it would be the area to the south of Deerwood, including the two churches that, uh, Commissioner Marks was talking about, plus the Rome property?
Um, no, actually, three would be as you go west on Deerwood Road. Um, it had previously included where five hundred, five hundred, um, Deerwood was recently approved. That's, that's what's referred to as Housing Opportunity Site Three.
Okay, would that be the area that would be south of Deerwood along Crow Canyon and up and west, right?
Um, I, so-
Cindy, why don't you bring up the map? I think that might help.
I don't know if this replaced what I was sharing previously, but, um, this is the map that I'm looking at. Housing Opportunity Site Three
Yeah.
is here, um, south of Deerwood.
Right.
It, it is north of Crook Canyon, but it's, it's quite far north, so it just is the properties that border Deerwood.
Okay, that would be like Cortese property.
That's correct, exactly.
Okay, the four would be Orion Industrial Court. I thought, now maybe I'm misremembering this, but I thought there was an issue on developing the area below where the townhomes are because of potential fault lines. Am I misremembering that?
There are some presumed fault lines, um, that are identified in the, um, Alquis Priolo Fault Zone.
Yes.
Um, there hasn't been any site-specific analysis of geotechnical, you know, um, placement of where that, 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 that fault actually is between those four properties on Ryan Industrial. But there is some assumptions that there are, um, some, some fault, um, that may limit, um, develop, uh, full, you know, full, um, development opportunity on the entirety of the site. And so that was, uh, incorporated as part of our Ceremony Village Specific Plan when we identified, that is a, as, um, multifamily residential units. Um, we, we did include in some of those capacity assumptions that, um, the faults may limit, how, how many units could go on those sites.
Okay, that's, that's what I remember. Okay, I, now I want to go to Item Two, uh, Housing Opportunity Site Five. Now, as I recall, that area is designated in the Crow Ca- in the North Camino Ramon Specific Plan area as commercial mixed use. It includes on the west side of Camino Ramon, the, uh, commercial services such as uh, Federal Express and a number of auto places to the left, to the south of Camino Ramon, you have the Extended Stay Hotel and you have the, um, Costco gas station going in, plus right off of Crow, you have a couple of older buildings. But that area is zoned as commercial mixed use, uh, not even mixed use. So in order to make that a housing opportunity site, wouldn't you have to amend the North Camino Ramon Specific Plan, uh, to change it from commercial mixed use?
Um, so Site Number Five here, Camino Ramon Fostoria, um, it's identified a hundred and forty-nine. Um, something just to keep in mind is that, um, we do currently have in the general plan, you know, it is, has that land, general plan land use destination as, um, mixed use. So there, there may still be some opportunities if the North Camino Ramon Specific Plan was not, you know, amended, that there could be some ability for, um, development there. But, um, we do anticipate that a number of our specific plans will have to be revisited um, as a result of identifying additional, um, housing opportunity sites through the, the housing element work. And so, um- And so as we've mentioned today, we may be reevaluating the ceremony village specific plan. Where assumptions that were made in in November twenty twenty may now require some changes to that plan. If we're adding more capacity to those sites. Same thing with North Camino Ramon, we may be reevaluating some of these sites if we ultimately decide that they should be. Added to our sites inventory list.
Okay, well, I I want to point out to you that since we permitted the Costco gas station there. The idea that that's going to turn into residential in the next eight years seems to me to be somewhat de minimis. I will also point out that we drafted and adopted the North Camino Ramon specific plan. One of the reasons that that area is commercial mixed use is that the city council was very insistent. Upon retaining service commercial in that area. So I understand, I looked at the general plan yesterday and this morning. And it is zoned as mixed use, that would include residential, I think we had that discussion at another meeting. But I want to mention that there are clearly like there is on the El Nido property. There are differences between what the general plan apply has and what the specific plan requires. And I think that one of the things we need to do during the general plant update is to the extent. Humanly possible or even inhumanly possible to make the two plans consistent. And this to me is sort of a glaring inconsistency that we need to deal with one way or the other. Okay. Now, items, site six and seven, they are all in the North Camino Ramon specific plan area. I had a question about number seven. Number seven, that's on the would be the west side of Camino Ramon?
Uh, yes, so I I'm sorry, seven is the the east side of Camino Ramon, Camino Ramon.
I got tired, my my bad. And that if from Norris to crawl on that side of the road is partially. High density housing and part office. The other side, which would be your number six. At least part of it, that includes the Norris Tech Center that Commissioner Marks brought up earlier. And on the North Camino Ramon specific plan, I think that the mixed use element would also would go down. At least to where the UPS warehouse is, maybe not farther than that, but at least to the UPS warehouse, so. I mean, it seems to me that's an housing opportunity site. Two things I want to mention, you brought up Norris, I think Commissioner Barks brought up Norris Tech Center. It is my recollection that when we adopted North Camino Ramon in two thousand twelve, that the owner. Of Norris Tech Center had expressed an interest in converting that that property, which is two story building, as Commissioner Marks pointed out. To residential, but was unable to do so because. Pretty much the entirety of Bishop Ranch is subject to conditions, covenants and restrictions. One of which is that any residential and business on Bishop Ranch has to have the consent of sunset, even if they don't own the property. Personally, I think that the Norris Canyon Tech Center would be a a. Excellent housing opportunity site. Because it's right across the street from the city village that we approved. And it's sort of underutilized, if you think about it, two story space. But that's something I guess we need to look at as well. On item number twelve, housing up to site number twelve, it's marketplace. And you have as potential sites. Housing units one hundred and ninety three out of a potential of three sixty four. And I'm wondering, since nothing has been built there, how you downgraded it from three sixty four to one ninety three?
I'll have to double check on that, but I think the the reason for that is that. Because we have a current preliminary application. And they have come in with a certain density proposal. That the potential units now have to identify the reduction in the acreage that's. Proposed as part of that preliminary application. And then the expected density that that had previously been expected to be developed at. Is now at a at a lower capacity than what was previously identified, so. I'll I'll have to double check that and I'll I'll report back at the at the next ad hoc, but I I would. Believe that it's because the the reduction in the acreage now that we have a proposed project.
Yeah, what what it appears to me, the the residents at San Ramon Marketplace is what you're talking about, that was the plan. That we saw the forty for sale units. I'm guessing that when you go back, what you're going to find is that if you take out the space that's going to be occupied by those forty units. What's left in the marketplace, if you apply our twenty two dwelling units per acre to that space? That's why you you're dropped down to one hundred and ninety three. I suspect that's that's what happened. Housing site thirteen is also mentioned by Commissioner Marks, Country Cup Village. And it is mixed use, it is mixed use. And I hear Commissioner Marks's concerns about. Taking out neighborhood shopping centers for housing, I I understand that there's a requirement that we need to meet our RIN numbers. But I I think that the shopping centers probably rank above, just below. Community parks in places you don't want to develop as housing. I item number fourteen, housing site Alcosta and Furcrest. I looked on the zoning map to try and figure out which property that is, is that now zone mixed use senior housing?
Right, the overlay for senior housing, that is where we're expecting that there may be additional capacity for those fifty two units.
Okay. Last, I think the last comment I'm going to have is on this on this table is number sixteen, the Labor's property. The first one that you point out, isn't isn't that the spot that the East Bay Regional Parks has a right of first refusal to acquire?
Is it sixteen that you're that you're?
Yeah.
Um. Oh, was that Lauren?
I didn't say anything, but yeah, sixteen and seventeen.
I thought I could.
Seventeen, they both have right of first refusals from from East Bay Regional?
Correct.
Okay. All right, just make sure my notes are right. And I did have a comment on your ADUs on table two, which is the pipeline unit. We did have ADUs for both. Wildflower, which is also Golden Skate, and also for, I believe it's. I think there's, oh, the Chang. And I I do remember Chang and it was Chang. And there's supposed to be, I think it's thirteen ADUs built in the forty three homes, I I know you have a little bit more than that. But those are the ADUs. I would like to see. You know, the the information you plan to submit to HCD to justify. A ADU number higher than that, the number you're talking about isn't all that significant, but. You know, the only ADUs that have been proposed other than Chang. Since I've been on the commission was the the Wildflower Golden Skate property. I know there probably were some ADUs built in the city, but. If we're going to go to ACD and and tell them, here's what we estimate, I'd like to see the assumptions that that is based on. Could you pull up cycle, I see, pull up table four, which is the potential housing sites? Table four, there you go, okay, so I'm going to bounce around a bit on these. My first comment is on. Housing site fourteen, nineteen oh oh one San Ramon Valley Boulevard. As you know, that's a use of ism for the Church of the Valley. Which is now, I think, a PS designation. I think that that is. An excellent site for housing, considering that is surrounded on three sides by housing. The thing that I we have to keep, I think in mind is that. As you know, from the discussion we had on the assisted care facility there. It is almost impossible to build on that property. If there is a hundred foot creek setback running right through the middle of the property. So it to make that a viable housing site, I think that not only would we require to rezone the property to residential. But you'd probably need a general plan amendment to reduce or eliminate. The creek setback, just just to comment on that. Item sixteen, housing site sixteen. I believe that portion of of San Ramon Valley Boulevard is where Eric's Deli and the rest of those. Shopping, excuse me, businesses are located, including the optometrist. Again, I I just will note at this point that converting retail, and this is purely retail. To housing is something that we need to be very careful about, even if we need to make our numbers. Housing opportunity site number three, that's the one that Commissioner Marks was talking about. That's the Ashworth property on San Ramon Valley Boulevard. I've been out there, it is a fairly steep slope. I'm not even sure that you can you can build on it, given our restrictions on. Building on hillside, so that's something I think we need to look at fairly soon before we make any decisions. Number housing opportunity site number two, that's the Deerwood Office Space, that's the one we had the. Concept review on for, I'm thinking it's around forty seven or fifty, it was fifty seven for sale units. And as I recall, that was pretty packed into that property. So I'm not sure that eighty eight units is really feasible for that site unless you really want to. Have small apartments or small condos. With respect to the rest, well, let me go back to the bottom ones eighteen and nineteen. That's Dordy Valley. Now, it's my understanding that. Those two parcels in the Dordy Valley specific plan were designated for. I'm I'm not sure this is the correct terminology, but village center. That was to be basically the only commercial retail space in the entirety of Dordy Valley. Which I personally consider to be a major sin. But it's in the Dordy Valley specific plan, so in order to change that to residential. I think we would have to have a Dordy Valley specific plan amendment. And do you have a sense of whether the other parties that would be required to agree to that? Which I believe would be the county and the city of Danville? How they would feel about that?
Um, so we we have been in discussions. Because of the unwinding of of Dordy Valley and and that project ultimately closing out, we have had some conversations with the county. At least on. A how our housing opportunity sites is currently shaping up and and the fact that we'll be looking at. Any potential opportunities, and so there are some preliminary conversations with. With related to what that could mean with the Dory in relation to the Dordy Valley specific plan. But, you know, we're just starting out with this list now. And if there are, you know, things that staff needs to consider and to continue to keep these on our opportunities. Potential sites, we want to have that feedback right now before getting too far, too far into those conversations with them.
No, I agree with you completely, I do remember attending a Dordy Valley Compliance Meeting, I forget what exactly it was called, this was a couple of years ago. And I do remember that at that time, I think Chappelle still had. The option to build out the city center, city village area, even though they had sold off residential to Toll Brothers. But I recall, this was years ago, that basically Chappelle was indicating that they did not feel that. There was really a viable plan for any type of commercial development at that part of Dordy Valley. If if that is still their thinking, it would seem to me that. It might be not that hard of a stretch to get the county and Danville to to agree to rezone that. But I guess we'll see. My other comments I'm going to do as a bundle, and that basically is for housing opportunity sites four through thirteen. Two of them are the old Charlie Browns, that's how I used to refer to it, that's at the top of Bolinger over by Club Sport, that's now an event center. Converting that to housing, I I didn't have a problem with that. I mean, we had talked about making that entire shopping center mixed use, I believe, which would allow for residential. But my main question had to do with all the buildings in Bishop Ranch. I've driven by those buildings, they're in BR fifteen seventeen and Executive Parkway, I think they're all five story buildings. To me, they look fairly new, much newer than BR six did. And so my question is. What was the basis for thinking they would convert to residential in the next eight years?
With respect to those sites, the one specifically identified as sub area Bishop Ranch on table four. So we're talking about six through thirteen here. Our preliminary analysis shows that it it may not necessarily be the same type of project that you would see at BR six where the. The buildings get demolished and replaced with residential, there may be some opportunities, whether that's in the parking area. Or some of the other. Underutilized portions of the property, that there may be capacity available there, so. That not all of those sites would be a tear down and rebuild.
Okay, so that's sort of a quasi BR twenty six hundred, where you take up the parking lots and build some type of additional structure, whether it's. A parking structure or actually residential apartment buildings?
Yeah, that's correct, and and we will be meeting, you know, and and. Making sure that the property owners are engaged as part of this inventory process. So there are have been some feedback provided to us previously. Which is why some of these sites have been targeted, but those will continue to be ongoing conversations to make sure that that that's. The there's some shared vision with our our property owners on those.
Well, well, I would hope so, if you're going to stay and say, we can turn this into housing, I wouldn't want Alex saying, no way, we just built those. Okay. So I'm going to move off of the the tables for a minute and ask a few broader questions. One is, you mentioned this morning, and I think it's all also on packet page five, the stakeholder interviews. The first question is, are those stakeholder interviews being done in private, or can either Commissioner Marks or I listen in?
So those stakeholder interviews have, we have been doing those with staff and the consultant and the invited stakeholders. Because some of the information is may be. Confidential to what the future, you know, direction of 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 that the property owners may be headed in. We've been telling our stakeholder, at least the property owners, that. The information they provide will be reported out in summary as opposed to specifics about. Their long term or short term goals for their properties. We do have stakeholder interviews with our some of our nonprofits and developer community. Those are things that we are continuing to schedule through February. But our consultant has recommended that those generally be conducted between staff and the those those groups. So that they don't feel. That that they can speak more freely about how they feel. You know, processing timelines and fees and and their their feelings about. Ceremonies overall direction that they can speak a little bit more freely on 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 what their issues or concerns might be.
Okay, I just can't see why they would have any hesitancy about talking in front of me, but that's okay. I mentioned to you that the. Discrepancy, shall we say, between the general plan land use designations and specific plan designations. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago regarding the El Nido property, and I mentioned it this morning. About the property in North Camino Ramon that is north of Cro Canyon off of Astoria. Am I correct that as part of the general plan update? We are looking at whether we need to take steps to make the two plans consistent?
We will be, that will be sort of a later focus of our work because the general plan adoption will have to. Take a will be. Processed at a at through a more longer time timeline. Because the housing element work has to be done by January twenty twenty three. We are moving ahead with trying to de- develop those site inventories and then. What policy changes will occur as a result of the the amendments we're making to to the to the housing element and. And that will then inform what changes we'll have to make with the land use element and where we stand with policies on on getting those. Those specific plan documents to align with the general plan direction.
Okay, so it's basically housing element first, cleanup second.
Well. Housing element drives what the land use plan ultimately will look like for this for this next general plan, I think we. We understand that that's really the driver of how the land use. Plan will look like for for that twenty forty horizon, and so that. I I would say it's not necessarily cleanup, but it's in response to the housing element.
Let's clean up another name, that's okay. Last question. Okay, so I know that that staff has been working hard with consultants, they're obviously going to make a series of. Suggestions on changes to the housing element portion and presumably at some point later to. The general plan and the specific plans as needed. Will there be an opportunity for the planning commissioners? To bring up and discuss changes that they would like to see? In the housing element, the general plan, or any specific plans as part of this update process?
That's that is built into our schedule. As you know, we have an upcoming February fifteenth joint session with the with the Housing Advisor Committee and and Planning Commission. The the tables that were provided to this group. We are looking to do some refinements of those tables based on the feedback we're getting today. And at the February fifteenth meeting, perhaps. Have a broader discussion with the with the the commission as a whole and get feedback from housing opportunity sites that way. And then before that public review draft is released. Once, you know, we're trying to refine those through through this ad hoc committee process. And that by the time we get to our 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 spring release of that public review draft that. We will have that built in sort of iterative process with with our commission and and Housing Advisory Committee.
All right, that's all the questions I have for staff. Commissioner Marks, do you have any questions before we do public comment?
No, I I can wait until after public comment.
Okay. All right, now we have time for public comment, and since we started at ten thirty and it's now eleven forty five, maybe this Nylander, you would like to reiterate. To the audience, what public comment consists of?
Yes, no problem, thank you. If you would like to speak during public comment, you may press the raise your hand button on your computer screen. Or star nine on your telephone to request to speak when public comment is being taken, and you will have three minutes to address the commissioners.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up public comment, I don't have access to raised hands, so this Nylander, I'm relying totally on you.
Yes, thank you, we'll give just a moment here, I don't see any hands raised at the at the moment, but we can give it just a bit.
Yes, I would be very chagrined if we didn't have fifteen or twenty people telling us what they thought of it.
Right. All right, I do not see any hands raised, and we did not receive any late communication on this item.
Okay, going once, going twice. Closed, public comment is now closed. Now we're gonna turn to the comments of the commissioners, and we're gonna start with Mr. Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the staff's answer regarding. Whether or not Commissioner Wallace and I would have access to some of the meetings that were held between stakeholders and property owners. There have also been meetings or will be meetings between various city committees and commissions and the staff. And can those be made available to us? That was a question.
Sorry, just want to make sure I I understand the question regarding the.
Well, my understanding was EDAC. The Open Space Committee. The the. Information on the tables is going before them as well, now if I misunderstood that, that's fine, but. I thought that was also, you were seeking input from some. From the members of various committees.
Oh, the committee I was referring to was our advisory committee, not not the open space or or. Or EDAC per se, they may be involved in in later edits that we're doing to the general plan, so. You know, if we are making changes in in policies to. The economic element policies or open space policies, we do expect some of that work to be happening. Outside of the hell housing element process, but the only other committee that we are involving as part of the housing. Sites inventory is our Housing Advisory Committee.
My misunderstanding then, and that's perfectly fine, we can do that through the land use discussion. I I think what I'd like to do is reiterate that. The concern I have about shopping centers in the city and. The conversion of retail space to residential within those shopping centers. I think that is the dominant land use and housing concern within the city. I'd like to find out from the city attorney. Whether the city attorney believes that section D four thirty eight of the zoning ordinance. Is sufficient to limit the amount of housing that can be. Created within existing shopping center, and if not, what are the legal options for doing that? If there are any, but I think that is something that it will at least be helpful to me. If we could hear from the city attorney and even have a discussion with. With him or the assistant city attorney at one of these meetings. When I take a look at the scope of work and I take a look at task four point seven, it doesn't seem to address. That concern, and that maybe it was just written in generalized language, and you have some flexibility, but. A a reading of of the plain meaning of the language doesn't seem to do that. I have a question about. Task four point seven point three. Which says that interior harness will facilitate one planning commission study session on the public review. Draft housing element. Will there be other opportunities for the commission as a whole? To comment on the work as it progresses, or is everything going to be done at that one meeting? And my concern is that there may be comments from commissioners. And it doesn't sound as though there's going to be an opportunity to review it a second time. To make sure that the comments were picked up accurately by the consultant team. So can you tell me how how you intend to handle? The public review by the planning commission? From start to finish at the planning commission level?
Well. I I will say that when that contract was developed, that was done before the new state. Law about the compressed time of review for. The housing element adoption, we have been working with our consultant team to. Address the best way to. To provide a public review of the document with the planning commission. Before we need to submit to HCD for their review, and they have given us some flexibility in terms of how. They will. Present at public meetings or study sessions, some of that work would also fall to this staff to do. The engagement with our planning commission, and so while the consultant may be. Contractually. Providing one public review of with their time to the commission, certainly we. As staff expect that we'll also be picking up some of that that work as well and and providing them. The feedback that we receive from the commission, but at at this point. We are continuing to work with them on how much information and feedback we get from the commission and. Some of that still has to be determined based on, you know, the the feedback we receive on our preliminary site. Inventory and and some of the data that we're presenting, and if we are. Far apart in terms of how many more sites we need and and what the those suggestions are. That may require us to meet more frequently to to discuss that, but. I guess the the short answer is after February fifteenth, we may get. You know, more feedback and direction on how much sooner we have to come back to the commission before completing that review draft.
Okay, again, my concern is that. While Eric and I will hopefully have a very good understanding of what's in the draft. I want to make sure that the other commissioners. Haven adequate opportunity to comment and seek revisions where they think it may be necessary. Let let me go on to. Task eight point one, which was page twenty one of the scope of work. It says interior harness will attend three planning commission public hearings. On the general plan, the climate action plan, the housing element, and the final environmental impact report. What it meant by general plan as distinct from housing element?
Well, again, the scope that was created was done before we expected to. Do a sort of bifurcated housing element and and general planned approval. At at one point in time when we created that scope with interior harness, the expectation was that they would be in alignment together. And that we had more time to put out the public review draft. Later in twenty twenty two rather than early in twenty twenty two. So that scope, when that was created, expected that those two documents would kind of fall follow the same timeline. Obviously, now because of the obligations of the housing element, we may be modifying that. Which meetings interior harness attends, but it was at one point in time expected that they would be processed together.
I expect the answer for my next question will be pretty much what you've given me on the first two, and that is task nine point six on. Scope of work page twenty three. Interior harness will attend one planning commission hearing on the final draft technical zoning ordinance. And so you don't really need to answer it now, Cindy, but it it sounds very much like a modification to the scope of work is really what's required. If we are not going to have very many opportunities at the planning commission level. I leave it up to you and the staff to work it through as best you can, but but I know that it is possible to amend the scope. And we'll just we'll just leave it there. Here are here are some. Comments I have relative to the actual document that I'm hoping somewhere in the scope. Can be addressed. And and this is something that in an email I I sent to Debbie some weeks ago. I think there should be, as of the date that the draft element is before the planning commission. A detailed review of the state laws limiting and defining. What cities must do, can do, and cannot do when processing residential development proposals. In other words, limit on the meetings, granting of waivers and incentives, density bonuses, what we can address, what we can't address. I think that is important to have in the general plan. As a reference document for the general public. And for us to refer back to as we are processing projects in the future. And secondly, I I hope that in the housing element itself. That there will be identification, discussion, explanation of the actual criteria. That are used to include properties as housing opportunity sites. It it doesn't seem adequate to me to say. This particular property is a housing opportunity site and not have it subject to some kind of scrutiny based on criteria that. The staff, the consultants, and ultimately the commission. Believe that all the sites should be subject to, and so it seems to me it would fit pretty neatly within the discussion of the housing element. Before you actually get to the housing opportunity sites. Going through some pages of notes here, so just give me a moment. Let let me ask you a question on criteria about owner interest. I think it's important that we know what an owner's interest is. But because an owner always has the decision whether to not to sell a property. I don't believe that owner interest is a reason. To or I should say a lack of owner interest is a reason to not include a site as a housing opportunity site. If the site is needed, it meets our criteria and the planning commission ultimately decides that it's a worthwhile site. In other words, I don't think it's a break, I think it's it's something we should know. Hopefully, it's in that's the kind of information you can disclose publicly to the planning commission, but ultimately. The city has a state mandate to create sites and. Can't allow any particular owner who has a site that could meet some of our needs under state law. To say no, and and we would simply discard that site. I think I I've already said it would be helpful to prepare some worksheets demonstrating. Whatever ends up on the list of housing opportunity sites at various densities. So that we make sure that we include all of what we need to, but not more than what we need to, and that includes the. Budge room for two thousand units that the staff was was talking about. Yes, we probably have to do that, but there are different ways to get there, it's not just property related. I I'd like to ask that. This is a minor thing, but when when you're here at home preparing notes, it would be helpful if the. Pages on the staff report were numbered. At least mine or not, and and it's hard to reference back and forth. And so I would I would ask that you number those. And so I would I would ask that you number those. And I think at this time, those are all of my comments. I know you've done a lot of work, and I know you are under a lot of pressure. Falsely imposed pressure, I might add, by the state to do this, but nonetheless, I think you you're doing a very credible job so far. We we just have a lot of catching up to do with you. And please bear with us as we try to get reasonably close to knowing what you know on the issues that we're concerned about. That will require us to ask questions. I hope it doesn't require you to do a whole lot of extra work. It takes time from doing what you need to do, but in the end, I don't see anything more important that is going to shape the future of this city than what we do on the housing element. So much of the city, I think, is going to change, be perceived as changing, and there has to be good rationale for us to approve it, for you to recommend it, and for the public to accept it. And so to the extent that additional meetings are needed by the ad hoc committee, I'm I'm happy to meet more frequently. I'm sure that's not a great idea from your standpoint, but because that generates more work, but but nonetheless, whatever time pressures, we can alleviate on our side relative to the work that you all need to do. I'm prepared to meet evenings. I'll even do some Saturday stuff if that's what you guys want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marks. I'm gonna break the make my comments brief. First, I concur in Commissioner Mark's comments that we need to see the criteria by which a housing opportunity site is is defined and decided. I recognize that there's probably lots of different criteria. I personally would be satisfied with the top five that you use to determine whether a particular site is a housing opportunity site that could be included in the housing element. The second question is, do we have detailed maps of the city more so than just the zoning ordinance? You had asked us whether other property should be included as potential housing opportunity sites. I know that Commissioner Marks gave you a number. I I wonder if there's something more detailed. Maybe you have to go to the county and get an A P M map to do that. But I just, I'd like to know that. But my third concern is the one I spent probably too much time talking about when I was asking staff questions. I was never concerned about the city being able to come up with five thousand units as potential housing sites. We have enough space that we can do that. What I'm really concerned about is justifying our RENA numbers for affordable housing. The table two, which is the pipeline projects you have set forth, a breakdown for each site in terms of different levels of affordability, low, very low, moderate, and above moderate, even you have extremely low. But you don't have that for the leftover units from the fifth housing cycle. As I mentioned, when I applied a fifteen percent yield to the units that you have listed for leftovers from the fifth cycle, I came up with three hundred and thirty five affordable units on mass. You have fifteen hundred plus. I would like to see a breakdown for each of the fifth cycle housing opportunity sites exactly how you broke down the affordable units for each such site. Because that, to me, is the most important question that we have to answer because if those numbers are valid, then it makes our job a lot easier because we have space in the potential housing sites in table four, particularly when we talk about the density that I think is appropriate for sites right on the floor of the valley of Bishop Ranch to accommodate whatever affordable units we need. But I just don't see getting to the affordable units that you have in table three from the existing housing opportunity site. So I'd like to see a breakdown of how you came up with those numbers. I like Commissioner Marks would be willing to meet as often as necessary. Saturdays, only if we go to field work after we're done. But other than that, you know, we're we're partners with you in this project. I agree with with Commissioner Marks that this is one of the, if not the biggest projects, at least I'm going to work on since I've been a planning commissioner. And I'd like to see it done right, and I'd like to give you the help that you need and deserve to do a project and a plan for the city. That's the best we can do. So, you know, I will make myself available as much or probably as you want, as little as you need me to. So I just want to put that on the table. So just if staff doesn't have anything to add, do you want to set a preliminary meeting of the ad hoc committee, or do you want to deal with that after the February meeting with the hack?
My expectation is that we'll probably need a couple of weeks after our February fifteenth meeting to reconvene the ad hoc. So that gets us to the week of February twenty eighth, plus or minus a few days. And so if you want to maybe keep that week in mind for the next ad hoc meeting, we will send out a request for for dates and times. But we do have some work over these next couple of weeks preparing for the February fifteenth meeting. And so we'll we'll certainly keep you updated on when that that next ad hoc meeting will be.
Thank you again. Commissioner Marks and I are available as as needed. So if you decide that you want to talk to us before the hack meeting, just give us a call and see what we can do. All right, anybody doesn't have any other comments? I see no heads going up and down. Let's adjourn this meeting at twelve oh eight P M on January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. Thank you for your attendance and cooperation and patience.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye, everybody.